Thank you very much, Commissioner Mercer. Is that better? We'll do a level test if you like. Good morning and welcome to our September council meeting. Before we start, I have a short announcement about the procedure in case of a fire alarm. A fire drill is not due to take place, therefore if the alarm sounds continuously, people should leave the building by the nearest exit and disperse away from the site for 20 minutes. As we start today's meeting, could we please stand for a moment of reflection on the days ahead? Thank you very much. I'd like next to introduce Marcia Walker, MBE, who is well-known to many of the community for her work and energy in organising events such as the Northampton Cars Carnival, and she will provide us with her reflections on the day.
Thanks. Thank you, Marcia.
Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Trying not to have too big a teacher voice this morning. Today, I want to, the few minutes I've got, to connect you with my country of birth, which is Jamaica. That's where I was born, I'm still very proud of it. I have a British passport for which I'm equally proud. And I'm connecting you with a pair of shoes. Not the exact shoes I'd like to connect you with, but still nevertheless a pair of shoes. I'm connecting you as well with my memory of it as a child, of the green of the Caribbean and the blue of the Caribbean, the sea, the trees, the plants, with the absolute green of Northamptonshire, our parks, our greens, no matter how small, Little Pockets Park, big parks, our big houses, our churches, our other places of worship. A unique place. I want to reflect very quickly on my pride of this county and why I'm glad I'm here. By complete accident, a little pinpick on a map, deciding, having got married, where I would want to live, not being able to afford houses in London. But let me take you back to Jamaica. My father was a hoist engineer, he used to check machinery at the sugar factory. And I can remember as a little child, I can go back to when I was five, my father coming home with great excitement when he got a new pair of shoes. And I used to want to put them on, because these shoes would look so beautiful. And that's how I got to know Northampton. My father would put his feet on a piece of paper at the factory, then measure around his feet, and then something magic must happen, I used to think as a child, something wonderful happened, and there would be a pair of shoes in about two months' time. I later learnt, this wasn't really magic, this was that his footprint came to Northampton and it was made for him and sent back, and out of his wages, the money for the shoes would be taken. So from a very young age, I knew about Northamptonshire. I also knew about Northamptonshire because of William Nibb, who came to Jamaica and worked and was involved in the freedom of that place from slavery. So Northamptonshire has been a part of my life for many years, and the shoe journey, my father brought his shoes over here in the 50s, and somehow we lost them in about 2011. It was a shame, because he died some time ago, but those shoes gave me my link with a county that I moved into from London to come and enjoy and get to know. And one of the promises I made was, every year I must do something that I've not done before. You must all make that promise to yourself, because it's a stunningly interesting place. So every year, I do something I've not done before, like World Conquer Championship, that takes part in the east of the county, or going to Floor Flower Festival, which is one of the oldest in the country, or just going to the Guild Hall and very quickly learning about the history of the county, or the privilege of having worked in schools, and many of you will know areas by pubs or churches, I tend to know areas of the county by schools, although I haven't worked in many few years, I can still pinpoint where schools are. The joy of the county is there to be had. It is a most amazing place, and as changes are happening within the country, we must get excited about the position that we once held and which we can get back again. It was with great excitement that the shoe came into reality last night with the new opening of the leather building at the museum, and they interviewed a young man who had come all the way from India to study. It is still, the county is still a world beater in many ways, and what we need to do is really celebrate that, because I just love it. I just find the diversity, not just of people, but activities and events, is just so amazing that I challenge anyone in any part of the country to say they can't find something to do. I'm excited, because one of my grandsons growing up in a county that's going to offer him a lot, and I hope all of you will contribute to that, to make this place a great place, greater than it is already. It's got warts and all, but few and far between, when you measure it, the happiness that it creates around this country is unique, and you must, must celebrate it. I want to leave you with two quotations. "When we are clear about our priorities, secure in our identity and committed to our goals, we can all achieve our dreams." And the second quote, "Let's treasure each moment that we have, because tomorrow is not guaranteed. Let's not waste our lives in fear or anger or pain, but break free of all constrictions to live in a way that fulfils us. Let's express what we feel we need to do and do the things that rewards us and others. Life is too short to waste, and time can never be recaptured."
Thank you very much, Marcia, for those very stimulating reflections on the days ahead. If we can start the agenda now, item one is apologies for absence. councillor Patel?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I have an apology from councillor Bowen, Parker, Shepherd, Walker, Garth, Smith-Haines and Fiona Baker. Also councillor Augur, Dudley Hughes and Martin Griffiths will be joining us after 11:30.
Thank you for that. councillor McGee?
Sorry, sorry. Chair, just to let everybody know, I asked councillor Bowen to represent us at the County Council's Network, AGM, in London today, and councillor Baker, unfortunately her son was taken to hospital in the night, so she won't be here today. I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Okay. Thank you for that. councillor McGee?
Thank you, Chair. Please pass our respects and hope that councillor Baker is okay, let us know, please. Chair, we are all present today, thank you.
Thank you. councillor Stamper?
Following in the footsteps of the Labour Group as regards presence here today, Chair.
That's really good to know, thank you. Any independent councillors?
Yes, thank you, Chair. councillor Hakehill sends his apologies.
Thank you very much for that. I've also got apologies from the honorary alderman Derek Batten and Derek Lawson as If there are no other apologies, I'll move on to item two to approve the minutes of the meeting held on Thursday the 20th of June. I've got one slight amendment to the previous minutes, which is not slight for councillor Hales, because she should have been listed and unfortunately wasn't, and councillor Smith-Haines as well apparently. The minutes are however set out in your notes, has anyone any comments on the minutes, or is it my wish by the council that I should sign the minutes?
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you very much. Do I need to mention that? I'm asked to remind people that councillor Smith-Haines had a declaration of interest as well that was included in the minutes, that I didn't mention at first. Item three is requests for members of the public to address the meeting. We've only got one person that's notified to us, and that's on item 12, the motion submitted by councillor Smithers, and that's councillor Brian Skitterell, who's a member of the Borough Council of Wellinborough. I've been notified of no other people wishing to speak. Item four, declaration of interest of councillors. We all know the importance of this section, so I don't intend to read it out.
Chair, I do believe that a member of the public did register in time, because I know that, because they're sat in the public gallery and they registered to speak, to address us right at the start of the meeting.
I was told that there was someone who'd originally approached Democratic Services, but it hadn't sort of been followed through. Not against the idea of us speaking, but would it be possible for her to clarify on what she was going to speak and something about it, is that...
We need to know when to place the agenda.
What item is it that she wants to speak on? Oh, you don't know, I thought you were...
It's the lady.
Yeah, I know all that, yes, yeah. Right, James is going to find out a bit more detail about that. In principle, I've no objection obviously to people speaking to the council, and we're trying to incorporate that in the necessary thing when it comes up, rather than it dragging on at the moment. As I was saying about declaration of interest by councillors, I've mentioned that and the importance that we do declare those if they are relevant, and that takes us on to the chairman's announcements, item number five. Right, if we're all ready, we'll go to item number five, the chairman's announcements. During the summer, two previous councillors, Mary Butcher and Stan Heggs sadly passed away. Mary Butcher was a serving member of Corby Borough Council, and she passed away on the 4th of July 2019. She's been a member of the county council from May 2013 to May 2017, representing the Oakley Division. Mary was also a member of the Health, Adult Care and Wellbeing Scrutiny Committee, and Mary had represented Beanfield Ward on Corby Borough Council since 2007, and was also a formal mayor of Corby Council. I know that one or two of you would like to pay tribute to Mary, who a lot of us remember for the years she was here. councillor Goldby?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. On behalf of the Conservative group and the administration, I just wanted to pass on my heartfelt sadness and our condolences to Mary's family. I know we did mention Mary's passing back at Cabinet, but we said we were trying to do a proper and appropriate job here at council today. I knew Mary during her term here, and one thing that stuck out in my mind was, there was a time when I got roped into doing Strictly Northampton, and Mary found that out and tried to give me some tips, and even invited me over to a class that she was involved in over at Corby. And I went to Mary's funeral, and there was a brilliant eulogy by her son, who talked about the joy she got from dancing and her role that she had in the community and her role as a councillor. So I just want to respectfully acknowledge Mary's contribution to us here at the county council and her role in local government in Corby. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you very much. councillor McGee?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you, Matt, and thank you who's attended Mary's funeral. And unfortunately, I was away in New York when it was Stan's, which I regret, because I did have a lot of time for Stan. First, I first came across Mary many years ago when she worked at Astors, and Mary was a champion of the local volunteer sector and spent many, many times helping them get money from a workplace and indeed other places, and I'm sure a lot of the volunteer sector in Corby will remember that. Mary did serve as a borough councillor since 2007 and was mayor for 2010, and I remember it well. She was an excellent mayor, got round everywhere, she was absolutely fantastic. One of her passions was domestic violence, and she was the spokesman in Corby Borough Council for that, and indeed, she was the spokesman here at county for that. But she was a ballroom, her passion was ballroom dancing, and indeed, she did teach my good lady and her daughter. Unfortunately, I was a lost case to the left feet. I'm okay at bunk rock, anything else, I'm a lost case. And she did try hard and try to push me and push me to do it. But I spent many, many years coming back and forwards with Mary in the car from Corby to County Hall, and we all know, Mary was not verbally challenged. I sometimes think she gave me a harder time, going back and forth in the car, and which Janet Drewall gave me for years. She was extremely challenging, and she had a lot of passion about what she did. She was an integral part of our group for a short time she was here, and indeed, she's been an integral part of Corby as a whole for many, many years. And indeed, as a Corby councillor, she was on the Police Commissioning Board. She took that as an opportunity to further as much help she could give to the domestic violence agenda, and she never stopped pushing that. So I'm sure that we all miss her, I know I do, and I'm sure everyone in the group do, but she will have remembered in Corby especially for a long, long time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, thank you. councillor Stamper?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and I'd also like to express the condolences of myself and councillor Meredith to Mary and Mary's family. It's a sad loss for Corby and for the county, I think. Like John, I first met Mary when she was the community organiser at Asda, and did she do a good job? Yes, she did. She was fantastic at that job, and you could see, you could absolutely see how good she was at engaging with people, galvanising them, pushing them to do things for the good of the community, and she was quite inspirational in some of the things she did in Asda, were lucky to have her, I think. I also worked with Mary at Beanfield Community Centre, where she was on the management committee and I was treasurer, and she was one of the people that was instrumental in keeping Beanfield Community Centre going, it's still going today, and she did a brilliant job there too. Her passion for the victims of domestic violence and protecting them was well-known, I think, and that was really something that she was very, very keen on, and she should have been very proud of everything she did there, and she did a great job. So she, I preceded her as the councillor for Oakley Division and succeeded her as a councillor for Oakley Division, and I have to say, on the occasion when she beat me in an election and on the occasion when I beat her in an election, she was nothing but gracious, both in victory and defeat, and I think that was the mark of Mary, and you could see the affection that the residents of Oakley Vale had for her only last night at a meeting of the Residents' Association there, when the chair paid a wholesome tribute. One thing that I'm not very good at, believe me, but which Mary was always good at to my mind, was her talent for speaking. She could get up and speak off the cuff without notes, she would speak coherently, sensibly and make a case, and that was one of the many things that used to impress me about her, and she will be missed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for that, thank you. We also lost former county councillor Stan Heggs, who passed away on the 19th of August 2019, and Stan was a member of Northamptonshire County Council from May 2005 to May 17, and represented the Corby Rural Division. He was vice-chairman of the council, which we all probably remember, and he was also a former deputy chair of the Environment Development and Transport Scrutiny Committee and the Customers and Communities Scrutiny Committee. I'm sure that some of you again would like to pay tribute to Stan. councillor Goldby?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. Again, with sadness, we speak of one of our old colleagues passing, and we pass on our condolences and sadness to Stan's family. I know councillor Gonzalez de Savage is going to speak in a little while, but I just wanted to give my reflection of Stan. Stan was fun and cheeky, and those of us that served before this current term were well aware of Stan and what his passions were. He ran his Skid Pan in Corby, I understand, and he was very keen on letting people know about the safety aspects of what he tried to do and how that affected us and the roads and everything here, and of course, his involvement with the Fire Authority. But again, I just want to respectfully, on behalf of the administration, pass on our condolences in a very respectful and sad way of the passing of our old colleague Stan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor Scott?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Our group were very saddened to hear of Stan's death, and I certainly was as well, because I'd known Stan for a number of years, because as you've said, as well as being a county councillor, he was a borough councillor in Corby, and that's where I met Stan. And he was a councillor in Corby from 1999 to 2015. He represented Stanion and Corby Old Village, and Stan was a very hard-working councillor. He had a number of passions, mainly the fire brigade and the police, and the safety of his residents. He bought through his funding, he bought things like speed cameras and those sort of things when his residents were complaining about speeding through the villages. He was very well respected by the villagers he represented. And you mentioned Stan's cheeky nature, and that's always something I remember. I can recall an incident when the SNL Welfare Building in Corby, which is just down the road from me, caught fire and burnt down. And I'd just come down the stairs about eight o'clock in the morning, when the phone rang, and who was it? It was Stan. Stan was on the phone saying, "Why did you put a match to that place, Bob?" He wanted information, that's what it was all about, but Stan would always put it in that sort of way. If he met my partner in the shops or even when we're together, he'd always try to tell her that the Conservative Party was a much better place for her. Yeah, he certainly was cheeky. And that's the way, certainly where I remember Stan. Sadly missed. He was well-known about the town, well-respected about the town, and I unfortunately wasn't able to attend his funeral, I was away at that time. Had I not been, I would certainly have been there, and I give our respects to his family and condolences to his family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor Stamper?
Thank you, Chair. There's going to be some recurring themes in this one then. So firstly, yes, condolences from myself and Dennis to Stan's family, it's a sad loss again for Corby and for Northamptonshire. I was first elected as a councillor in 2003 to Corby Borough Council. The following day, quite early in the morning, there was a phone call at my house, and my wife answered the phone, and it was Stan Heggs on the phone. He said something to her which was inimitable Stan, but which I will not repeat right now, and she remembers that phone call to this day. And then I was called to the phone and spoke to him, and the first thing he said was, he was expressing his surprise that two Liberal Democrats had been elected to Corby Borough Council, and immediately said, "You will join our group, won't you?" And I think I disappointed him then when I said no, and probably disappointed him many times after that. I also couldn't make his funeral because I was also on holiday, see what I mean about recurring theme? And that was a shame, I would have liked to have been there. I have a friend in Corby who I've known nearly all the time I've lived there, and he often talks of Stan, talks of the time when Stan worked for Stockwood Motors and sold a van to his father, who was a painter and decorator in the town, and often recounts the story of this van, again, long story and I won't go into it now, but he has an affectionate nickname for Stan, which Matt almost got to in his piece, certainly to him and maybe to many other people in Corby, he was known as Skid Pan Stan, and I think that's how I'll remember him. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. councillor Gonzalez de Savage?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. One short thing that we have lost from this chamber are two very kind-hearted people, both in Mary Butcher and Stan Heggs. They didn't just have the county at heart, they had their communities, I think that's really passionate. I think if we can all learn from their attitudes and their passion that they showed on a daily basis, I think we could really do a tremendous amount more for our communities that way. Stan Heggs and Mary were both linked through a very interesting way, through Asda's and the fire station, in fact, the central traffic island in Corby, because Stan campaigned for many, many years to have better, safer roads, and in fact became the man behind the traffic junction there at the fire station opposite Asda's. He was absolutely passionate about road safety and became officially the county council and the county's highway champion in terms of road safety. He also served this county through all the areas very well indeed. As Lido indicated, he did have a passion for fire in every way possible. He did also represent us at the Fire Service Commission and deputised for me when I held the role there. He was also a gentleman who through and through saw a lighter side of life, but at the end of the day had a very serious tone, which was when people really mattered, he was there for them. And he really did represent his community very well indeed. He was always, day or night, at the beck and call of his people. He was always, day or night, at the beck and call of his people. If he knew your turf a number, you knew it because he used it regularly. And I think there are many of us in this room probably who also had multiple phones because there was always a Stan phone and always the other, because he would always be ringing there. He was a genuinely good man and a very kind-hearted soul, and I think we should all learn by those examples. He was persuasive in so many ways, and there were not any quiet days in this chamber when we had meetings when he didn't say, "Mr. Chairman, there's a point of order." No one ever challenged him on that point of order. And everyone saw at the end of the day that he was trying to represent his community with an interesting fact. I went along and represented, as did other members of the county council today, to his funeral. And it was an event that, at the end of the day, sums up a really important part of our county, which you mustn't forget. We're not just Northampton-centric, we represent the entire county, and there are people there from all areas. He did have a tremendous passion for representing his people on this county council until he retired, and his family are very appreciative of the fact that he had that opportunity. I know he also battled locally over Borough Council there at Corby and was, in fact, the only Conservative member for quite some time. I think there was a mention there at the service that he could, he in fact joked about the fact that an opposition meeting could take place in a phone box. It was a very small little group he had. But these are important people, and they will shed their shadow positively throughout the communities to come. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you. Councillor Clark, did you want to add to the tributes?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to share an experience I had with, several experiences with Stan Heggs. When I was doing highways many moons ago, Stan Heggs really acted as an alarm clock. As other councillors have said, he was an early riser, but certainly earlier than me. And the phone would ring at half past six or thereabouts in the morning. And occasionally, I'd say, "Stan, do you know what time it is?" And he'd say, "Yes, I do, it's half..." "No, it's 25 to 7:00." As I was saying, Michael, this pothole, this pothole at wherever it was down the road is enormous. And I said, "Right, I'll take a note of that, and I'll have a word with you, perhaps when we meet at county..." "No, no, no, it's, I've got the dimensions of it for you, and my neighbours already complained about it, and you should come over to Corby and have a look at this specific pothole, because it's an absolute disgrace." Nobody did more for their division, I think, than Stan Heggs. He took up about 50% of my time when I was doing highways, and he was an absolute gem. And he got things done, and that's what we're all here to do. We make ourselves known to the portfolio holders, particularly in the case of highways. We pressurize, but nobody pressurized more of greater success than Stan Heggs.
Thank you very much, and thank you, everyone, for those very gracious tributes to those two councillors. Could I invite you to stand for a minute so that we can remember them? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Chairman?
Yeah?
If I may, very quickly, just moving on to something positive and refreshing, if we just may acknowledge that during the summer, one of our colleagues, councillor Brown, got married. I think it's just appropriate to reflect that. And congratulate him.
I hesitate to say well done, but we all wish him really well. Thank you all. I've just got a couple of short announcements of these things I've been doing over the summer. I won't go on for very long. Over the summer, attended a series of events, including civic services in Rudyard and High and Ferrars, and been part of celebrations around the county which show the importance of our civil heritage and the value people place in their communities upon it. And I have been really struck by the value that plays like High and Ferrars and that have attached to the civic role that their leaders have had in those areas. On that note, the civic service for the NCC, the county council, is going to be held, as you possibly know, at St Peter's Church in Western Fable, Northampton. And it's the first time that it's been there, and they are really looking forward to holding the service. And it is going to be on Sunday the 20th of October at 3 p.m. And I do hope to see as many of you as possible there. Before I finish, councillor Ekins would just like to say a couple of words about the Standout Charity and the contribution you've all made to it. Councillor Ekins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if I may carry on the theme of members here at the NCC caring about Northamptonshire's communities. Mr. Chairman, I would like to take the opportunity to set today's meeting off on a positive start, and I do hope it continues throughout the rest of the proceedings. Standout Northamptonshire is an aspiring charity for Northamptonshire's children in care and care leavers. Mr. Chairman, the charity held a bucket shake with the confirmation of Northamptonshire County Cricket Ground a few weeks ago in a 2020 match. And on behalf of the charity, if I may, like to thank the Labour Group, the Lib Dem Group, the Independent Group, and the Conservative Group in providing the funds to purchase the equipment that we used on that night in the bid to raise no less than £1,066.74 for the charity. So I'd like to give my personal thanks for that, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would also like to thank our bucket shakers on the night. From the NCC staff, Sapphire Finch Crouch, Marion Windship, Nick Newman, who's a volunteer under the Standout banner, and councillors Anjona Roy, Suresh Patel, Dennis Meredith, Chris Stamper, Graham Lawman, Laura Lawman, Andy Kilbride, and myself. Backroom staff, Mr. Chairman, included Simon Knight, my other partner, my partner Jackie Ekins, Roger Coleman, and the chair of the charity, Adrian Price. But, Mr. Chairman, most people are thinking that I've missed one person out. I reserve that for the end. Councillor Auga has got a new, shall we say, all I'll say that he has the most ingenious way of extracting cash from sporting supporters. Absolute new light. I don't know how he did it, but the man had the charm of the Irish, no pun intended. I don't think anybody got past him without actually putting something in the bucket. He was just absolutely amazing. I think we were all standing there in awe on how he was extracting cash. So a special thank you to councillor Auga, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to finish up on two things, is that we are actually planning or hoping to plan on at least two more bucket shakes in Northamptonshire's, shall we just say, larger sporting arenas, to be confirmed. But also, we do have two buckets there on the entrance of the chamber, where please feel free to put as much cash in there as you possibly can. And notwithstanding, Mr. Chairman, this is a charity for Northamptonshire, for Northamptonshire's children in care and care leavers. It is our charity, it's our county's charity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much for that. Item six next, petitions. I've not been notified of any petitions at this morning's meeting, so that takes us to the opposition priority business. And I'd like to invite councillor Scott to move the motion, if he would.
Thank you much, very much, Chairman. Mr. Chairman, fellow councillors, did you know that Cancer Research UK are projecting that one in three people will be diagnosed with cancer? And that one in 10 new cancer cases are found in people under 50? That's over 33,000 cases per year. Many workers get a serious illness at some time in their working lives. They may require time off, often many months, to get treatment to recover. I was 60 when I was diagnosed with cancer. Fortunately for me, I survived and returned to work, but many people are not as fortunate. Sometimes, there is no effective treatment. In such cases, the individual may face a time of huge emotional stress, fear, and uncertainty. Organizations such as trade unions can try to ensure that when that happens, they try to remove additional stress and worry, as can other bodies. However, a terminal illness is a disease that cannot be cured or adequately treated, and there's a reasonable expectation that the patient will die within a relatively short period of time. Usually, but not always, they are progressive diseases, such as cancer or advanced heart disease. UK social security legislation defines a terminal illness as a progressive disease where death as a consequence of that disease can reasonably be expected within six months. However, many patients can have a terminal illness and survive much longer than the six months. Being told that you're to die as a result of a disease for which there is no cure or effective treatment, and that you only have months, or at best, a year or so, to live, is a traumatic event, and everyone will react differently. Sometimes, the nature of the illness is such that the person is unlikely to be able to work again. In other cases, a person may decide they do not want to work anymore, and would rather spend their remaining time with their family and friends, getting their affairs in order, or simply doing what they want. However, a lot of workers with terminally diagnosed diagnoses decide that they want to continue working as long as they can, either because they need the financial security or because they find that their work can be helpful, helpful distraction from their illness. Whichever choice a person makes, they should be able to expect and help support from their employer. Unfortunately, the experience of many workers is that their employer is either unsympathetic or puts up barriers to them continuing in work. Over my many years as a full-time official, I experienced those employers who were not helpful, and I also experienced employers who were very helpful. If a worker with a terminal illness loses their job, they lose their income. They can also lose any death in service payments they've earned through a lifetime of work, as it is payable to those that die while still in employment. And that's a double whammy for them and their family during a high period of emotion, stress, fear, and uncertainty. NCC has been going through a very difficult period, as we all know. Our staff have had a wage freeze for some time. Agreeing to this motion and signing up to the TUC voluntary charter, will, I am sure, go some way towards showing our commitment to our staff. I therefore ask for your support for this motion, which seeks to get terminally ill workers covered by protected rights at work in line with those covered by pregnancy, maternity rights, seeks to protect death in service benefits, and seeks to allow workers with terminal illness to die in dignity. I ask you to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Could I ask councillor Eales to second the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Dine to Work campaign was launched as a voluntary charter in April 2016, and its primary aim is to protect workers with terminal illnesses in the final months of life and give them the freedom to choose the best course of action for themselves and their families. Some will want to stay in work, some will want to leave work, whatever, it needs to be their choice. And the Dine to Work campaign simply serves to remove the option from a rogue employer from forcing someone with a terminal illness out of work. The patron of the campaign, Jackie Woodcock, received in the last Prime Minister, Theresa May, an honour in the honours list, and just over three years later, it now protects 1 million working people. Private companies, large and small, have signed up, including Rolls Royce, Royal Mail, TSB, Santander, Aon, the Co-op Group, Wilkinson's RS Components, and Unilever, just to name a few. Now, a number of local authorities have also signed up to the campaign. Some of them will be familiar to people in this chamber. Northampton Borough Council signed up to it, and I had the personal privilege of signing that charter as the then mayor of Northampton. Leicestershire County Council, Lincolnshire County, and the West Midlands Combined Authority led by Conservative Mayor Andy Street. Now, the campaign enjoys widespread support, cross-party support in the House, and the Conservative lead for that is Pauline Latham. And in July of this year, there's to be something for you guys on that side of the chamber to note, the Conservative Party itself, as an employer, confirmed it wants to sign the voluntary charter to protect people who work, those lovely people, that work at Conservative Party HQ. So, look, aside from the fact that it's something that the Conservative Party is doing, it's the right thing to do, it's what a good employer does, so I'm sure it'll get cross-party support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a variety of people who'd like to speak to this motion. Councillor Nadine Hawley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we totally agree with the motion, and we'll be accepting it. The council, basically, the principles that are in this charter are already adopted by NCC. The council supports terminally ill employees and will always try to do what is in their best interests, respect their wishes, and ensure what is most beneficial for them in their individual set of circumstances. We also support employees by extending sick pay so that they are not disadvantaged. There are times when it is more beneficial for the terminally ill employee to remain at work, especially when they are members of the LGPS Pension Scheme and their family will benefit from the life insurance elements of three times their salary after their death. However, it may not always be beneficial for the employee to remain at work. Therefore, we explore ill health retirement. Sometimes, where sick pay may have been exhausted and the employer has no pay situation, it may be more beneficial for them to retire if they are in the LGPS rather than stay employed and receiving no pay. So we are going to support the motion, and we have the deepest sympathy for people who are going through these circumstances. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councillor McGee?
Thank you, Chair. I am very, very pleased to hear that you support the motion. In fact, I didn't expect that we would. We all have a heart, we all know it's the right thing to do. And we're not asking a lot. Some of the specific things in that charter is to include a specific statement that they will not dismiss any person with a terminal diagnosis because of their condition. And that's an easy thing for us to do. I'm sure HR can put that in. And some of the things that we have to do is to ensure that we give some of our senior management in HR the training to help and support people at work and financially make adaptations. So, Chair, I'm not going to speak much longer on this because we do have an agreement on it, because it is the right thing to do. And this should be one of the beginnings of some of the support that we give our staff and many other ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stamper?
I'm deferring to councillor Meredith, Chair, if that's right with you.
Thank you. Councillor Meredith?
Thank you, Chair. I would also like to give my thanks to the Labour Group for putting this motion before us this morning. Indeed, it is quite a shock to a person when doctors diagnose them as being terminally ill. And it's something that they have to come to terms with, because it couldn't be nothing worse going to the doctor and saying, "You've only got 12 months or six months to live." I also want to thank the Conservatives for supporting this motion, as my colleague, John, said over there, it's a nice gesture, we've all got hearts and we should all do this. One of the things about being diagnosed or terminally ill, and I've looked into some of the things that they've been telling me as a councillor, is finance. And a person who is diagnosed shouldn't have to worry about finance finding... And the person who is diagnosed shouldn't have to worry about finance, finding finance for his, the he or she's family. And if this comes into being on the same lines as pregnancy and maternity rights, it would be really, really good if the employers took this on board, because they should have a care, I think, a care of duty to these people that have been diagnosed with this. And it also needs to go a little bit further, I think. It needs to go, and I'm glad that the, I see that the Labour Party's lawyers are trying to get this through into Parliament, because that's where it needs to go. It needs to go and to make it law that this comes about. So, thanks very much to all in the chamber for supporting this. I think, really, this is one of the best motions that I've had the pleasure to be able to speak on, and it's very, very meaningful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Brookfield?
Thank you for the anticipated cross-party support for this motion. Earlier on this summer, the LGA Conference was held, and I was fortunate enough to attend that and have the back to prove it. But at one of the stands was the GMB, the GMB Union, who asked me if there was still time for Northamptonshire County Council to do something really good for employees in the county. And I said, yes, of course, there's time. I will take this motion to our group and then put it forward to this council today. And I'm really pleased that we can do that and we have got time to leave a legacy for future councils in the county, but also for employees who are employed in local government. It's such a valuable thing for us to be able to do. Just want to also give another shout-out to the Trade Union Congress and also to the GMB Union and Unison in particular for promoting this charter. It's what trade unions do best, I think. It's sticking to the day job, doing the boring well. In November two thousand and sixteen, Corby Borough Council, on the thirteenth of November two thousand and seventeen, I beg your pardon, they adopted this charter. But also, three days later, on the sixteenth of November two thousand and seventeen, Northampton Borough Council did also, and I'll end with the words of the leader of Northampton Borough Council, who said, not only will this provide staff with job security and reassurance at a difficult time, but it will also demonstrate our commitment to them as employers. It's a great reputational thing to do, but it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Mercer?
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I'd like to express my gratitude to the opposition for bringing forward this motion. When I saw it, I was shocked. I thought, surely this is already in British legislation? Surely there isn't a hole like this that someone can exploit? If someone's dismissed when they're terminally ill, surely they've got a case for wrongful dismissal? Apparently not at the moment. It's a matter of common decency that you treat people well, and if you go and dismiss someone or reduce their employment hours or whatever because they're terminally ill, then you should be ashamed of yourself. Following on from that, if anybody knows of cases where employers in this county have mistreated, let alone dismissed, employees who are terminally ill, I would hope they would name and shame them, because it's a disgrace if they do.
Thank you very much. Councillor Roy?
Thank you, Chairman. Councillors, very, very happy to support this motion. Although there are some protections in the Equality Act for some people taking action to protect their legal rights, this is often a lengthy process. I still work for a discrimination advice charity, and from the Act of Discrimination to taking it to tribunal can take, generally, it will take a lot of months, nine months, ten months. Sometimes it can take years. If you've got a terminal diagnosis, you don't have that time. In addition, doing so is stressful at a point in time where there are already multiple stresses, not only health, but other worries and concerns that you may have. And having, it doesn't bear thinking about that, having to take the decision to spend time in conflict with an employer, rather than making memories of making an actual difference in the world. I'd like to take the opportunity to publicly, again, thank the staff that work for us and state how proud I am of them. We work, our staff are incredibly committed. And as a council that fails to pay them national terms and conditions, when many of our district and borough colleagues are awarding their staffs better pay terms and conditions, we've got to take every opportunity we can to improve our offer. And this voluntary agreement is part of improving that offer. And everything that we can do for our staff to make sure that they have confidence in us, that we will be protecting their interests, is what we should be doing right now. So, happy to support the motion and happy that we're supporting this TUC campaign. And thanks again to GMB and Unison for promoting it as well.
Thank you very much. Councillor Goldie, did you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I wasn't going to speak, but just to reaffirm that we are supporting this and we didn't want to over-politicise the fact that, you know, this is about our staff. Our commitment to our staff remains clear, especially around what we said about pay rises, and I'm sure that'll be brought up a bit later, and I do mention it in my report. But just to reaffirm that this is something we're supporting, the simple things that we can do to show that support to staff, and we're happy to stand by that and do that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Could I ask councillor Scott to sum up and comment on that?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you all very much for the contributions you've made. First of all, Nadine, thank you very much for advising us that your group are totally agreeing to the motion. And thank you also for outlining some of the options that are available already to staff. I'm well aware that as an organisation, we try as a council to be an exemplar, and that's one of the roles we should be doing and are doing. So, thank you for that. John, thank you for your contribution. It is the right thing, I think everyone agrees that. Thank you, Dennis, for your support also, and the points you made. And councillor Mercer, I think was quite right, you know, when he opened his remarks, he assumed that was already covered. Many people assume that. I've dealt with cases where employers don't think about, are not sympathetic at all to their employers, that they look at the bottom line. And I used to try very hard to get agreements in place where there would be a type of insurance policy that covered the employers, but there was very few companies would sign up to those sort of things at that time. So, thank you for your comments. And Matt, thank you for your comment and the commitment to staff. I know very well that, you know, our commitment to staff is very high in this council, albeit that we've got the financial implications we have. And I'm well aware that, in any case, the chief exec has discretion and uses it very effectively whenever that occasion arises. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you, everyone, for their contributions. Could I ask the council to vote on the motion? Deafening silence, motion carried. Thank you very much. I to make is questions to the chairman of the Audit Committee. So, Mr Jessop is making his way down to the front and is ready to answer any questions and is going to make a short statement. Thank you.
Good morning. So, before taking any questions, I'd like to make a few comments, mainly to update you on the Audit Committee meeting held on the thirtieth of July. I was beginning to think that it would never happen, but I am pleased to report that the committee has now approved the accounts for two thousand and seventeen eighteen. There is no longer any impediment, at least on the NCC side, to Ernst &amp; Young getting on with the audit of the two thousand and eighteen nineteen accounts. The accounts for two thousand and seventeen eighteen were not qualified, although the auditors, as expected, qualified their opinion in respect of value for money. The auditors tabled their ISA two sixty report, it's the weighted document, and a good record of the issues that impacted the production of the accounts. They made twenty-nine recommendations relating to two thousand and seventeen eighteen and brought forward nineteen recommendations from prior years. With only one exception, which related to LGSS, which, as you know, is under review, management have accepted all of the auditors' recommendations. The committee will monitor at each of its future meetings how well officers are performing in implementing the agreed actions. The committee continues to receive and consider any internal audit report that has a limited opinion in respect of the control environment or compliance. Since I last spoke to you, we've received limited reports on independent social care, payments to early-year providers and section seventeen payments. These reports obviously are all available to you via the NCC website. And I know that we'll be considering more limited opinion audit reports at our meetings in September and November. The committee continues to monitor how well officers have implemented actions agreed as part of the audit process. In recent months, the method by which we do this hasn't really been as robust as it should have been, and in future, we've asked that the CFO presents the regular monitoring report to the committee. This will give additional visibility and hopefully an additional encouragement to make sure that any outstanding actions are resolved as soon as possible. I'd like to mention the support that the committee continues to receive. We get very good support from Democratic Services. We were very pleased to see Barbara Gale's promotion, and why we'll miss her direct support, we look forward to working with her successor. I meet the CFO at least monthly and have access to the CEO, the commissioners, the leader, the portfolio holder for finance and the monitoring officer whenever I need it. We get significant support from the CEO, who makes herself available to the committee when relevant, and is making sure that internal audit and their reports get full attention by the leadership team. Finally, I'd like to thank Ian Duncan Pearce, personally and to the committee. I'm disappointed to see him go, but I'd look forward to working with his successor and wish Ian all the best in the future. So, now, I'm happy to take any questions you may have, if there are any.
Thank you very much. Councillor Stone, I think you had a question for the chairman?
Thank you, Chair. A number of questions, really. On page twenty-seven of the audit report, it talks about our finance teams being under-resourced. And on page twenty-seven, again, it talks about delays in managing the recommendations that are made. I just wondered if there's any hope of that situation improving? And more than that, I'm wondering if you've got any sense, since you've been chair of the Audit Committee, of any kind of improvements that are being made in how we do things? We've got a transformation team, but we still have overspends. There must still be a concern from an audit point of view about the governance and management of the finances of this county council. And we know that we're under scrutiny nationally, it's not just through our own audit processes. So, for me, reading in your report, questions around under resourcing and delays in action are really quite worrying, and putting that together with the fact we still have a number of overspends, what's important for us is to be able to measure the progress that is being made, and you're uniquely qualified to give us those kind of reassurances. Thank you.
So, undoubtedly, there has been improvement since I've been here, you know, not on my account, but on the account of the work that other people do. If you say that the starting position was one and an ideal situation would be ten, I think we've got to about four. In other words, some progress has been made, but there's a lot more to go. In terms of the staffing, there's two, three points I've made in relation to that. First of all, it is the case that internal audit for a period were understaffed, and that was just through, you know, natural issues, they were below complement. And it does take some time for people to catch up once they've got this bow wave of work that still needs to be done. On financial management generally, I'm aware that that is being looked at by offices as to how that should be maybe changed for the future, so I can see changes come along there in a while. And I think the other thing which is the case, that when you're looking for improvements to turn around, leadership is key. And certainly from the finance side, Ian has been very good, but of course, he's leaving, and therefore there will be, in my mind at least, some hiatuses. But I've met the new CFO, I'm impressed with him, and I think he and the chief executive together will keep pushing forward.
Thank you very much. Councillor Irving Swift?
Thank you. I will speak as a member of the committee. First, I think we should thank our independent chairman of audit. He is very helpful for members. Audit is always a very dry subject, and we are lay members, so when I receive all the papers, I am overwhelmed and sometimes I think, oh, a bit out of my depths. So, the chairman has been very useful. I could send him very boring email, from my perspective as a lay member, and very kindly he said, no, you are all right, it's in the right direction. And also, last time, he did some things that none other chairman have done. We met an hour before with all the members of the Audit Committee. So, like that, we could have little technical issue between all of us. So, when we came in the committee, when it was for public, we didn't look like complete idiot. And I say that kindly, because I think audit is something that if you are not willing to understand the number, not willing to understand how it works, it's always dismissed as an exercise of the past. But if you do not understand your past, you cannot go with a good future. Now, I am very reassured by what our chairman, Mr Jessop, has said, that he can ask the support of the cabinet and of the leadership team, and they will make sure that the recommendations that were on the audit report, the twenty-nine recommendations, will be monitored closely. So, and if you have any question, please, I'm sure the chairman will answer your question, and I find him very helpful. So, thank you so much for taking the task.
Thank you very much for that. I didn't quite capture what the question was in all that. Councillor Davenport?
Thank you, Chair. On page thirty-nine, you mentioned the section one oh six audit being given a satisfactory assurance and that... and that you've requested additional work to be carried out. I mean, how confident are you that there'll be no more emerging issues or surprises with section 106 payments? And how confident are you that you have the time and the resources to analyse the thousands upon thousands of retrospective purchase orders by the new deadline in October?
So in respect of 106, I think that has such high level of visibility now that I'm quite confident that we won't fall into the difficulties that we had in the past. On the retrospective purchase orders, we have asked internal audit to do a review on that so we can get the facts to see whether the situation's getting better or worse. I can't tell you what the answer is because I don't have it yet, but I will obviously chase them up to make sure they produce the information. I know you have an interest in it.
Thank you. councillor Stamper?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Two questions, if I may. First one, now that the accounts have been signed off, there was some talk of a public interest report from the auditors. I'm wondering if the Chairman of Audit has any knowledge as to whether such a thing will be coming forward or not? And secondly, the length of the audit for 1718 has cost us, council, hundreds of thousands of pounds in extra costs. This surely can't happen again, can it? What's the Chair of Audit's expectation in this regard? Thank you.
So to answer the first question in terms of the public interest report, obviously that's a decision for KPMG. I have no knowledge yet as to whether they've decided to issue one or not. What we encouraged them to do was to put as much detail into their ISA report such that if they did actually produce a public interest report, it would just be the same thing. So that may mean that they feel they no longer need to do it, but it's obviously their decision. In terms of audit fee expectations for this year, I don't know what the situation will be because it's the first year for E&amp;Y. Clearly, I'm quite confident that we will do a better job in terms of providing information to support the audit process. And we will, I'm sure the new CFO will have ideas in relation to how the accounts are produced, and whether that's LGSS people or our people that do it. So I don't think it'll be anything like as bad, but obviously there are issues which might mean it's a not entirely normal year for audit fees.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chairman, for answering those questions. That takes us on to item nine, the business items. And section A is the appointment of the Chief Finance Officer. I'd like to ask councillor Longley to move the report.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I think you'll all know, if you weren't before, be well aware that Ian Duncan is moving on at the end of September. Very unfortunate because Ian's been an absolute star and has helped us on the road to recovery. Ian, just to put the record straight, Ian was originally intending to stay here until next May, when the original unitary date was established. However, he's been living out of his suitcase, and none of us like doing that. And when the unitary date was extended by one year, he decided that the best thing that he could do, A, he didn't want to do another year, but also the best thing that he could do was to leave earlier rather than later, so that the new fellow could get his feet on the table. So that's the story behind Ian. But we're very sad to see him go. Now, we move on to our new CFO, who has been coming in one day a week so far. You may or may not have seen him around. He looks very similar to Ian in many respects, about the same height, speaks with the same accent, and has got the same haircut, so you've seen him around. Anyway, Barry Scar, and he'll be starting full time. Ian leaves on the 30th, that's another week he's got. He's on holiday this week, he'll be leaving at the end of next week, and Barry will be starting full time, and we've all dealt with him so far, and he looks very promising. We shall see. But he's very experienced, been around a long time, and been highly recommended by a number of people we trust, and so we'll welcome him and hope we carry on as we've been doing so far. Thank you, Chair, move then.
Thank you very much, thank you. councillor Goldby to second the report?
Yeah, I'm very happy to second his appointment, I'll reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions to the motion? councillor Stamper?
Not a question, I'm afraid, Chair, but I just wanted to echo some of the comments, firstly about Ian Duncan. He's been a pleasure to work with, been as straightforward and as honest with an opposition councillor as he could possibly be, which has been really welcomed, and that was really helpful. Has slightly different style to his predecessor, but just as entertaining in his own way. And I shall miss him too, but I'll congratulate Mr Scar. I'm sure the commissioners have made an excellent choice, and I look forward to working with him too. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Could I invite councillor Longley to reply?
Little to say, Chair, I think we both said it.
Thank you for that. Does council accept the advice in the report? Item B, Northamptonshire Health and Wellbeing Board Annual Report. Sorry about that, just getting messages in my left ear. Health and Wellbeing Board Report, yes. councillor Morris to move the report?
Thank you, Chair. I'm very pleased to move this report on behalf of the Health and Wellbeing Board. There are a number of items in here, you will see the great work that they carry out. I assume that you've all read the report, so I'm not going to go into any great detail. But certainly around mental health, there have been some really good subgroups working on that, and certainly the mental health crisis Concordat subgroup have been working with NHFT and Northants Police, which means that mental health professionals are accompanied by police officers on relevant calls and give them valuable support. And I think you'll agree that that's a really good outcome. In terms of healthy workplaces, which alludes a bit to the earlier motion, they have been doing some great work on how we may shape and drive forward a workplace health programme for the county, and of course we will be fully engaged with that and fully supportive of that. As an exemplary organisation within the subgroup, of course, we would be hoping to lead the way on that. The work on the Better Care Fund to help with detox and to reduce the numbers has been helping greatly to help with that work stream. And interestingly enough, each area now has a Health and Wellbeing Forum, which has got some funding attached to it, and the districts and borough councils have been invited to submit proposals for a portion of a 750k pot of money from Public Health to fund innovative projects for local communities. So far, 16 projects have been agreed across Northamptonshire, with varied and exciting public health outcomes expected within each local community. So the board has a wide reach and a wide remit, and I commend this report to the council. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Could I invite councillor Dean Doherty to second the report?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yeah, anything that the Health and Wellbeing Board does to benefit the residents of Northamptonshire is welcomed, and therefore I second the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you. councillor McGee?
Thank you, Chair. I recognise that, I mean, I recognise that the board is doing some excellent work, but there's still a lot of work to do. What I don't see in there is real outcomes. Perhaps when we're giving an annual report like that, we can have some measurements, real outcomes, what difference we have made to our residents countywide. That shouldn't be too hard, I expect, because I know there is some excellent work in there. But what I am concerned about, and I hope the board can look at, is the life expectancy across this county. For years, the north was extremely low compared to the rest of the county. It started a plateau for a while, but it's going back down again. Perhaps the board can look at that reason and make some recommendations to make sure that doesn't happen. And one or two things I didn't see in here, Chair, if I may ask the question, is what's the future of the Health and Wellbeing Boards going into unitaries? Have they actually looked at that? Will we have to? Have they looked at how public health will actually go across the county? Will it be two? Will it be one? Surely the board should be looking at how that would work too. I much prefer one, working in partnership with two unitaries myself. I think that would be better because of cross-cutting issues. But surely the board should be looking at that too. And perhaps they should also look at the CCGs. We have two CCGs just now, Corby has it, so, and we had their own for a very good reason. The Health and Corby was far below in many areas to the rest of the county, unfortunately. They are now trying to merge it. Why are they merging it into one when we are going into two unitaries? Where's the synergy in that? Perhaps the Health and Boards could be looking at that and making some recommendations, or at least saying why this is happening. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. councillor Hales?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to raise a few issues. One of them is when we look at this report, a lot of reports are on the subgroups. Where I can't see is get the synergies actually between the four priorities that sit under the Health and Wellbeing Board. And if you're not aware, that's every children gets the best start, taking responsibilities and promoting independence and creating an environment, you know, and I don't actually see that. You have to read down, and I spent all yesterday morning, and I will actually say sometimes, hope some of the other councillors have actually gone back and the work you've actually done during the data we need, because actually when you look at that report and that development aid that was put forward, I mean, the report is 80 pages long. And then when you look specifically at the public health priorities, it's then getting cross-party of why we're not seeing that being delivered the service we take, because certainly with it, and you look within the waiting, and I probably need to have a meeting with Lucy afterwards to understand it more, is where social isolation only sits in number five and six within the waiting. And when you look at social isolation, it's so important for mental health within two areas that we actually put highly within this council. And also with social isolation, you look also under public health and their remit. When you look round with transport, and you know, we now don't give any money towards transport. Transport is so important to public health, because how do people get to their appointments? I mean, I'm just having some health issues. I mean, my appointments come through, I can either go to the Woodlands, I can either go to Northampton for a test, oh, by the way, I can actually go down to Bedford. I mean, but you actually, you know, it's actually getting there. I mean, if you've got your own cars and public transport, it's not there. And we're a very rural county, and we need to take issue with that. And also I would like to praise and also say with Kettering's forum, although I can't actually go to their meetings because it's always held today, but I will say, we actually won a bid, and our one is beat across the street, which actually is going to be start next Wednesday. It's actually taking beat into the streets for the next six weeks, doing games within the streets, and hopefully some of the Kettering Borough councillors and the county councils will go along and support that. And also, within Kettering, we've done a lot of work when we're looking at planning the environment, and the East of Kettering Forum was based 10 years ago. We actually put in there, we needed health within there, you know, and I think it's nice to see it there, but I still want to see more where this report goes back to the four main priorities. It highlights, you'd only find the public health ones if you actually went and did the work and look on the data one, which is really sad, because you do a lot of great work, but I can't see it coming back to the four main priorities, what Health and Wellbeing Board has set itself. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. councillor Stamper?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. So clearly from reading the report, the Health and Wellbeing Board has a lot of work on its plate, a lot of work streams, and they're trying to do a lot of things. I wonder, however, whether those things are being done as successfully as they ought to be. The report tells us in paragraph 3.1 that the Health and Wellbeing Board is intended to strengthen the democratic legitimacy of commissioning decisions. Yet from reading the report, I can only identify two democratically elected members on that board. So I'm worried that the democratic legitimacy is not necessarily being strengthened, especially given that there's now no separate health scrutiny function at this council. So there may be some issues that the Health and Wellbeing Board will need to address. And can I suggest that perhaps one thing they could do to address an issue that has arisen recently, is to look at what can be done to restore the funding that has been cut from charities locally, from a project delivered by consortia. Been reported in the press that that's been cut from 2.4 million pounds a year to 1.6 million pounds a year because of this council's inability to spend public health grant in accordance with the rules. For instance, just to give you one example, the Autumn Centre in Corby is set to lose 57,000 pounds a year, and that's a huge chunk out of their budget. So challenge for the Health and Wellbeing Board, do something that people will notice, and find a way to restore the funding to those organisations who have been affected by this cut. Thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor Norman?
Thank you, Chairman. A couple of quick points. First of all, in answer to the previous point, I can, sitting as a public governor on Kettering General Hospital, I can assure you that the working together of the various parts of the health service is definitely improving, and particularly between the two hospitals. They now have a joint chairman and are working on some shared services, would you believe? But I just wanted to also reassure councillor Hales that each of the boroughs and districts, there is an NHS contract for a volunteer medical driving service, and in Kettering, it's run by Shire Community Services, who also have the contract with Wellingborough. So there are people who can, who are specifically there to volunteer to take people to medical appointments, be it hospital, doctor, dentist, even if they're visiting a relative in hospital who they couldn't normally get to, at just purely at the expense level, works out probably less than half the cost of a taxi and they're awake, so they're, you know, it's a very valuable service. So there is a way for people, even in rural areas, to get to all their medical appointments on a reliable way. And if councillor Hales wants details, I can certainly give her contact details for that.
Thank you very much for that. councillor Scrimshaw?
Thank you, Chair. I have a particular interest in homelessness. I see it as probably one of the biggest priorities in current times for this county. So I welcome the fact on pages 68 and 69 that the Wellbeing Board have been sort of working around the changes brought forward through the Homelessness Reduction Act, which is an act which I support. I think it aims to do some good things, and I think it's therefore good that they are involving in that. But I sort of share councillor McGee's comments about outcomes. I'd like to know, you know, what their involvement has actually brought forward. In Kettering, where I'm from, for example, up until a couple of weeks ago, we were getting, on average, 27 new homelessness applications a week to the Borough Council. We currently have over 200 households in temporary accommodation, and that's a figure that has been rising month on month on month for the last three or four years. There is a clear and obvious connection with housing and homelessness, with health. I was reading history about social housing the other day, and I didn't realise, 100 years ago, when council housing first started, it was actually driven by the government through the Health Department, you know, not a separate housing department, and that makes perfect sense. Where we go in the future, I mean, we've got, I think it's something like 500 children across the county in temporary accommodation at the moment. So again, just stresses for me the importance of the issue. Where we go in the future is really important. Obviously, we're moving towards unitaries, combining services with the boroughs and districts and the county, that will help. And of course, that will involve health as we move towards closer health integration as well. So I welcome the fact the Health and Wellbeing Board are looking at this issue. There isn't any commentary on what their task and finish group has actually achieved, but I look forward to hearing more. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Could I invite councillor Morris to sum up?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the thoughts on the paper there. I would point out, I'm a member of the board. Obviously, we have an independent chair of the board. I will feed back as much of that to the board as I can at the next meeting, and I would share some of your views on that in any road. So outcomes, I will ask Lucy Whiteman, the Director of Public Health, to put together something on the outcomes or where the outcomes are and where they might be going. something on the outcomes or where the outcomes are and where they might be going, and I will circulate to all the councillors that information. Councillor McGee, you asked about the CCGs. They're somewhat of an anomaly here in the county anyway, because we've got the Corby CCG, which is just Corby essentially, and then everything else around it. And I think the CCGs are now moving towards that, the thought that they really need to join up together in order to have the commissioning power that they need going forward. I don't think that's entirely, I mean, the unitary debate, of course, is relevant to where health goes, but they will exist alongside the unitaries presumably, and they still need to exist in a good manner and how their commissioning work and things like that. So I'm sure they're looking at that, and I know the Health and Wellbeing Board do have a unitary stream of discussion, as it were, around where we're going with the unitary as well, so they are feeding into that. Councillor Hales? Yes, transport and social isolation is an issue. There are a number of voluntary organisations, like Ability, I could name many others, the Welly Bus, there's lots of them, that do help people get to appointments and things like that, and the Volunteer Bureau as well. So there are a number of organisations that will help with that. councillor Stanborough? I note what you say on that one. Public health funding is very much a separate stream of funding, as we know. It is government funding, it is not county council funding, and it is subject to rules that Public Health England apply. We have to follow those rules, and from time to time, those rules change, which means that although we are, of course, looking at how we may help to fund these businesses going forward, you know, it can't be a given that they're funded from Public Health England because the rules do change. We're working very carefully with those partners to make sure that we try and find a solution that works for everybody, and we have been doing that for some time. So if you want further information on that, of course, please do come and see me, and Lucy and I will happily meet with you to discuss that further. But there is ongoing work in that area. So, Chairman, I would recommend this report to the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Does council accept the report?
No.
Thank you very much. Item C, the Safeguarding Children's Board, we are waiting for the police superintendent, who has come exactly on time, which is really good, thank you for that. So we are going to do item C as per the agenda, Northamptonshire Safeguarding Children's Board report. And I'd like to invite councillor Goldby to move the report.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I am pleased to move this report. councillor Baker was going to introduce the report, and she was very well prepared and had lots of good statements to say about it, but I will just make a few comments if I may. So as council will recognise, as in its states, this is the final report of the Northamptonshire Safeguarding Children's Board, and the chair for a good duration of that time, if not most of it, was Keith Makin, who is stepping down. His introduction is there, highlights some of the key issues being faced over the last year and what some of the challenges are for the future. But since the change in government guidance, which is called Working Together, the latest iteration was Working Together 2018, there was a clear change and a clear challenge to the partner agencies around safeguarding, that's be the police, health, and us as social services, to work together to own the outcomes and to own how we safeguard children together. And that is a very clear statement, and that partnership, or that used to be called the Safeguarding Children's Board, is now called the Northamptonshire Safeguarding Children's Partnership. A couple of the key issues in there that are addressed or are talked about are the concerns around elective home-educated children, and one of the serious case reviews, that was a particularly pertinent issue. And I think through councillor Baker, we've discussed that it's something we want to try and raise through our offices as councillors at a higher national level, because there was a direct influence on some of the outcomes of that serious case review that could have been a lot more tragic than it actually was. So that's something we want to take up and do something about. And of course, the prevalence and the issues of gangs and what they mean in terms of safeguarding for some of our children in the county. Before I hand over, I just want to recognise and again thank publicly Keith Makin for his input and his independent chairship of the Safeguarding Children's Board over the years, and wish him well for the future. But I'm happy to propose the report to council. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. councillor Adeem Hawley to second it.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm happy to second the report.
Thank you very much. We're pleased to say that we've got Superintendent Richard Tomkins here as well with us today, and he's going to introduce the report and take any questions that you may have. Richard Tomkins?
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. So it's Rich Tomkins, I'm a detective superintendent, I'm the head of public protection for Northamptonshire Police. So I have day-to-day operational responsibility for a number of our teams covering both child and adult safeguarding, so including the child protection teams, child sexual exploitation, missing young and missing children's team, and domestic abuse and that type of area. So I just want to touch upon, it won't take too long, but I just wanted to go through this final report then, and as councillor Goldby has already covered, this was the final report of Keith Makin's. And I think then I'd probably rather spend most of the time talking about the future plans, so I think that's more important that we look forward rather than we address back. I think what is interesting in the report, it talks about key issues which are very relevant still today, principally the exploitation of young children. We've done a lot of work within the county. A number of years ago, probably three years ago now, I was directly managing our child sexual exploitation team called Rise, multi-agency, has had some really good recognition, but that was focused on the sexual exploitation of young children. And now, I think, as we move on, and typically they're about 13 to 15-year-olds. Now, as we move on, I think we recognise, don't we, that many of our young people are not only being sexually exploited, but they're being dragged into gangs and there's concerns around knife crime, wider criminal exploitation, and we've got young people, for example, that we've arrested carrying drugs, that we would say there is a defence in the criminal law of duress. We don't think they're doing that because they're being forced into it. And is it right that the criminal justice system, the police, do we treat them as victims or do we treat them as offenders? Most of us, I hope, here would think we should be trying to support them, and we don't want to go down a criminal justice route. So the report recognising a number of that. As I said, certainly an area of concern, and I guess I'm not the expert here to talk around the home-elected, but that's certainly quite a stark figure in here. We've doubled in the last couple of years the number of young people that are home-schooled, and that is a real challenge for the police. We often find they drop through the cracks, and they seem to have a lack of support from statutory services. Another aspect that the report highlights is missing children, and that's something, I guess, quite dear to my heart. We've done a lot of that, a lot of work around that now, and we've got record levels of missing children, many of which are those 16, 17-year-olds. Again, if you follow the news, there's a lot of talk about unregulated care homes. So these are not Ofsted-regulated, these are supported accommodation, and we get many of our 16, 17-year-olds going missing. In the last, or just the last month alone, our top five missing people in the county are all under 18, and those alone, together, have counted for more than 50 separate incidents. So the most frequent missing child at the moment has been missing 15 times in one month alone. So you can see, she's a looked-after child, causes us a lot of intense work for all agencies, but the key to all this is keeping her safe, isn't it? So it remains a challenge for us. I think the other, the key aspect to this, as I said, that hopefully you've read the report, but it documents some of the work that's been going on. What I want to spend a couple of minutes about really was just talking about the changes now. So under the Working Together legislation introduced in 2018, it was incumbent on the police, three responsible authorities effectively have to pull together. So they disbanded the Safeguarding Children's Board, and they put in place the new partnership. So the partnership comprises three authorities, that is the police, the local authority, principally children's services, and health, principally the CCG. And all three of us now have an equal and shared responsibility for child safeguarding in our county, and that's replicated up and down the UK. So there's a lot of work we're doing around that. So Keith Makin is no more, he's moved on. We haven't yet got an independent chair, and it's down to a number of us. So I sit on the strategic leads meeting, we meet monthly, and we're pulling together some of those issues. Some of the ones I've already talked about, we are trying to make some changes. So one of the things we identified was the MASH, which is our multi-agency safeguarding hub. We've changed the way we're working, we changed it actually on Monday, just gone, just rejigging some of the desks and trying to change what we do in there. We're trying to increase the fact that around domestic abuse, we know that many of our young children are impacted by domestic abuse. We get about 40 incidents a day in the county, and about a quarter of those is young people directly involved. So how do you try and keep them safe as a result of that psychological harm caused by domestic abuse? So we're trying to do, change our way that the MASH operate. We're trying to do more around missing, and the key, one of the key priorities has to be around child and sexual exploitation. And we just conducted an independent review, it's the first thing we did as a new partnership into the workings of what we do, because we recognise we're not always getting it right. What I think most of the reports, both the recent Ofsted report and the police HMI report, so the Hermitage Inspector of Constabulary that looked at the force in its publicly available document, would say that when incidents get high risk, we have quite a good grasp on them, we put resources into them. So that's not necessarily the challenge. We're always quite good at dealing with risk. The challenge is that lower level and what we do around that. One of the things I'm really pleased to see is that we've introduced a new subgroup, very, very early days. I can't, I'm not going to come here and say we've achieved a lot so far, but early days, but we've now set up an early help subgroup, and I think that's absolutely right. Now, I'm bound to be biased as a police officer, we deal with crisis. When levels reach critical, that's when the police get involved, and clearly we don't want that. So if you can intervene a lot earlier, and we know about austerity and the cuts across services, but I think that's something that we need to get better at. So the key three themes really moving forward is, one is positive action, so we need to intervene early enough to prevent escalation in crisis of a young person. Exploitation, as I said, is critical, and that goes to the heart of, it's sexual exploitation, it's gangs. We've got now the community initiative to reduce violence known as SURF. We've got next week, next Thursday, we've got the county-wide conference taking place in Kettering, and a lot of that focus, the focus of that conference is on exploitation, and there's inputs around gangs and things like that. And the last one is around effective partnership. And I think it's fair to say it's been a real challenging year for safeguarding children in the county. As the councillor Goldby has just alluded to, you know, a couple of national safeguarding children reports that hit national press, didn't they, around the murder of two young children in this county. So, you know, we know we've got to get better at doing some things, and I think it's no doubt for me, we've got the Home Office, we've got people looking at us on the work we're doing in this county, and I think we're facing a lot of scrutiny. And I think that's right, we have to do that, but we need to get better at some of the things we do.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming and explaining those issues. councillor Birch?
What you've just been talking about actually is very, very reassuring. A lot of the report, I'm reading it, is about information gathering, and again, no actions actually included in the report, but your updates have been most reassuring. I mean, the HM inspection report actually highlighted one of the issues that you dealt with, and I hope this will continue to improve. And it talks about managing the risk of your work with partner organisations and saying it was ineffective. We need our partners to be robust, and we need to tackle child sexual and criminal exploitation through an integrated Rise support team. So we would support any move in that direction. One of the things in the report which is concerning, and it comes from the children's voice, the safety and well for our children, young people, is at the heart of our work, and many of them do not feel safe in their environment, whether it's through the litter that they come across, the feeling of the environment surrounding them in parks, not being conducive to their, you know, to the activities they want to undertake there, but also hanging about of older youngsters, older youths. They're frightened of the intimidation that these gangs cause, and they don't feel safe in their environment. This is something that the children in our town, the young people in our town, have come forward with, and I think that's something that you probably need to think very carefully about. They always say that we never see a PCSO on the street, we don't see policemen, I've only seen the policeman twice, is one of the comments. That's an important element of keeping our communities safe, and especially our young people. One other question I have, you may not be able to answer.
I was just going to comment on that point, is that, and again, I guess I'm trying to avoid being political, but, you know, we've had significant cutbacks nationally in the police in the last 10 years. I actually, I was lucky enough to be at the superintendent's conference last week and heard the Home Secretary speak for the first time to a police audience, and pledged to increase policing, which we know about since Mr Johnson's become the president, sorry, the Prime Minister. And he probably, to be fair, probably wants to be the president. Yeah, Freudian slip there. But one of the issues, I think, that we talked around was that, you know, the real significant challenges of policing, and I think one of the things that we have seen is probably a lack of visible policing. Now, we do a lot more now child safeguarding, but it all comes at a cost. So what the public will probably never see is that, you know, I have an online paedophile team, and last week they went out and did five search warrants and arrested five men in our county for trading indecent images of children. But the public will never see that because we do it quietly, we knock on the door, they're unmarked police cars, we arrest them. We've got record levels of sex offenders in our county, and again, I was on Look East a couple of weeks ago talking about this, and this is not scaremongering, this is not to my mind, because we've got a huge amount of increase of paedophiles necessarily, this is because of the availability of the online stuff. And so half of all our sex offenders now that are coming through are doing indecent images within, you know, the comfort of their own house. Now, many of those will never go and directly harm a child, they'll do it behind a computer screen, but we need to remember there's a victim and all this. But all this comes, you know, we put more and more resources into safeguarding, sometimes at the expense of having visible police officers. And I think one of the big things we've agreed as a police force is, we hope to get a couple of hundred extra police officers, and we want to increase the visibility of our police officers on the street. Everybody would want to do that. I think it's been a really challenging time for policing in the last few years, there's no doubt about it. And I hope now, whatever politically, however the fallout of politics in the last, in the next few months, I hope that we'll see that through, and we should start to see in a couple of years, I think it will take, but in a couple of years' time, I'm hoping we'll improve visibility of policing this county.
It may not be for you, but it may be for the portfolio holder. April 2018 to June 2019 saw 53 child deaths. Do we know how this compares with comparable local authorities in the country?
I haven't got the direct stats. We are pretty comparable to other counties. And of course, there's a couple of those who are horrendous, they resorted in murders and they hit serious case reviews, but we're pretty comparable. I used to manage the coroner's office, and we haven't got anything particularly, we're not out of kilter with any of the counties in terms of deaths of young people in our county.
Thank you. councillor Meredith?
Thank you once again, Chair. Personally, Superintendent Richard Tomkins, I've heard you speak on a number of occasions, and I'd like to thank you for your hard work that you put in. And this chamber can feel really pleased that you're really on the ball and looking into these problems, and I thank you for that. I want to, I want to say, give you a fact that is true, and which recently I've learnt on, that one in four children in Northamptonshire are living in poverty. It's not me saying it, that's been told to me by Restore, the head of the director of Restore, which runs a local food bank in Northampton. And when she told me that, I was quite horrified. And the reason I'm raising this is because children that come from poor backgrounds are easily led into exploitation by some of these horrible people who want to interfere with young children. If a child is living in poverty, it's easy for someone to them, say, I've got a packet of crisps, would you like a packet of crisps? And the children then will readily accept, because they don't normally get that at home. Within that organisation, which I visited recently, to see some of the people coming in with their children was quite upsetting to me, I have to admit, and it had a very great effect on me, to see how the children with their families and the parents coming in there and asking for food so they can eat it. It was very upsetting for me. Some of the people didn't even have sugar in their houses, to be able to have a cup of tea with sugar in, they had to ask for sugar. of tea with sugar in, they had to ask for sugar and this particular food bank only had a limited amount of sugar and put the sugar in a little plastic bag and give it to them. That was one of the things that affected me. One man come in with his two children and the two children looked very poorly dressed and he asked for some tins of beans and tins of soup, but then he said he didn't, he couldn't open the tins of beans or the tins of soup because he didn't have a tin opener. And that is absolutely, so they actually-
Your, your three minutes, Councillor Meredith, has come to an end.
They actually give him a tin opener to book, but all I'm saying to you is, Superintendent, is I urge, I urge you to look into these situations because children who are in these situations are easily led and I think it comes from that.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just wish I had more time to speak on it because it is very emotive. Thank you very much.
We will, we will, thank you. Councillor Orger?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Superintendent, for your service to our community. We've, over the decades, we hear a lot about partnership working and it almost seems to be reinvented as each crisis arrives, you know. I'm just wondering when partnership will become the very DNA of our statutory organisations and we don't need to be compelled by statute to do that. But aside that, this is a really complex and difficult problem, there are so many avenues and difficulties in trying to keep our children safe, sometimes because of their own behaviours make it difficult to engage and to keep them safe. But one of the things that I came across this week, and it's a very specific question, it's one of where do we put them to keep them safe whilst we do the assessment? I received a phone call from one of our trusts and the issue was of a fourteen-year-old on a children's ward who had been there following a county lines investigation and some substance that they had consumed and was kicking off with violence and aggressive behaviour. The first question I asked the medical professional is, is there a medical reason for them to be on the ward? And of course there wasn't. What they were waiting for was suitable accommodation somewhere else with other services to try and get this individual to a place where they could be safe and be treated. Historically, they would end up in a detention room at a police station, which obviously, thank goodness, we've moved on from that. Are you confident that we have the investment and resources and physical facilities available to try to, whilst we're dealing with these difficult individuals, we have places to keep them safe? You've mentioned about these residential properties that they are residing in, which is totally inappropriate, but are you confident when we're dealing with the critical, with the crisis, that we have places to put them rather than children's wards, which they shouldn't be on because of the impact on everyone else, or detention cells, which shouldn't really be used for people with mental health issues?
I'll try and start with a positive, so if we police protect a child under section forty-six of the Children's Act, so we, we turn up, we believe a child is in immediate risk of harm, we police protect them, that could be a few number of reasons, because we believe they're at physical risk of harm or sexual risk, so we take them to a police station. We've now got an agreement with the local authority, which I'm really pleased about, rather than taking them to a police cell, which is never suitable, in fact, sorry, I need to cut, it's not a police cell, we take them to the police station, normally involves a cop putting their hands in their pocket and buying them a can of coke, sitting them down with a bag of crisps, sitting there and then waiting for hours and hours on occasions while we ring around and try and get some support. During daylight hours, office hours, that's now far better. The challenge becomes without of hours and I guess this is, just while I would say we've had significant cutbacks in the police, I'm sure children's services will say they're financially struggling, as a, from a police perspective, I would welcome a greater number of homes and suitable accommodation and social workers and things like this, we really struggle. So as soon as you start police protecting people at a weekend, I was on the weekend just gone as the duty superintendent for the county and we struggle. So as soon as we take somebody to try and get that child in, to get somebody out and collect them, is a real challenge for us and we know that across the board. So quite often the police will say we will end up probably sat with somebody, just the same as mental health, it's the same sort of debate, probably longer than we should, if that makes sense, because there was a lack of services for that individual to go to. So it is a real challenge for us, but there's no easy solution as to these young, young children because ultimately you want them to reintegrate back in society where you can keep a child at home, clearly that's the best place for them. So there is no easy solution to this and, and of course, it's quite a sad day, isn't it, if you then have to take a child into what, secure accommodation and effectively depriving them of their liberty for long periods of time? So they're big decisions and I understand that and it's a high threshold to meet, but I think, yeah, we struggle, I think across the board and I think there is a real acceptance that we need to try and do more to try and keep people and try and keep our children safe and those, particularly those seventeen, eighteen-year-olds that can end up in these semi-supported accommodation is a real risk for us because they're not particularly, they're not regulated and there's some real challenges. And that's across, that's across the country. The BBC have just ran an article on it, you know, a report, and certainly that's what we see in this county. So it's a challenge for us.
Thank you, thank you for that. Councillor Hales?
I want to pick up the issue once again about home education, as Matt actually alluded to it, and actually if you look in the Health and Wellbeing Board meeting on the eleventh of April, they actually raised concerns there. Within that, they were actually saying, you know, that thirty and a half percent of these children are known to social services. I mean, we need to understand, and it also quite clearly states in the minutes of Health and Wellboard meeting, we need to understand the characters and profiles of these families of why they want to home educate. It can't just be all about our education system is not right for them. I mean, it probably isn't for the families, what they want to do, but there is a hidden area that we don't understand about and I think we need to understand from a safeguarding point of view. So how can going forward the partnership, you say it's the police, the local authority and health in this new partnership? But I think the biggest one is education because actually when you're a parent, when you know your child is raising four, over even nursery and younger, the most people who have contact with your child is the teacher. They're the first point of contact of children, you know, and I think we need to understand this more because it is ridiculous amount of children. We must say that our education is failing within Northamptonshire with the amount of parents who have taken their children out. We need to understand the reasons why and is it just purely education reasons what they're doing it for? And also the, the Health and Wellbeing Board also raised the issue once again of the number of schools that are actually excluding schools, excluding pupils, you know, academies can do what they want, they're not actually brought to the table to actually say, look, we have got a responsibility, it's our responsibility as a local authority, we've got, both our hands tied behind the back with academies, something needs to be done to protect the children more because we should not have these deaths. And the sad case that was never reported, I mean, it, it was inhumane what happens to these children, there's too many children within our county who are put at risk through no fault of their own. And the safeguarding partnership needs to do more and we need to do more and it's a sad fact that academies are not doing enough, you know, for these children from when they have them from the age of four up until eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lawman?
Sorry, would you like just to, just to comment on that? In terms of legislation, now it was obviously drawn up by the government and the government specifically said the three agencies, I've alluded to, and actually there's a number of us, when we were looking at the transition arrangements, were quite surprised, me myself included, as a personal view, this isn't necessarily Northamptonshire Police, but I was quite surprised that the education were omitted from that, that, those four. And what we have discussed at the strategy meetings is that we need education on board. So if you look at the sexual exploitation, we've done a lot of work in the county to try and highlight the dangers of internet-based abuse and knife carrying and clearly the school is where, you know, children spend seven hours a day there, so it's your captive audience, isn't it? So it's absolutely imperative that the schools are involved in that. There is some challenges with the schools that we would recognise inasmuch as many don't come under local authority responsibility anymore with the, with the academies and so actually, and again, I know from an operational perspective where we used to do a lot of work around where our child sexual exploitation was taking place, we would go to some of these academies and say, you've got a number of young individuals here that are being exploited, can we come and do some work with you? And some of them would say, no, because we haven't got the time, we're busy. So it's quite hard to pull together, does that make sense? Whereas of course you've got someone to escalate to within the police, ultimately the chief constable, children's services, you know, the director, so it's different. Education is quite, quite a challenge for us, but we are trying to get them on board and they are coming along to the strategy meetings, they are just not one of the three responsible authorities named in the law under the new legislation.
Thank you for that, thank you. Councillor Lawman again?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, started to touch on the subject I was going to speak about, thank you, Superintendent, the work you do, it must be most traumatic at, at times. Many of us are school governors, of course, and it just happened by coincidence on the day to the last cabinet meeting on the morning, I had to sit on the panel for a permanent exclusion of a child. I won't go into the reasons for the exclusion, but I don't think there was any leeway. And we asked what would happen to, to the child. The answer was they were to be home schooled, partly because no other school would willingly take them, I think, and we're, and the other alternative was CE, complimentary education, which is perhaps not the best place for, for some children. So it happened and Councillor Scott mentioned home education at the cabinet that afternoon. So I approached the DCS after the meeting and inquired about what input the local educational authority had on home education and she got one of her staff to give me a, very kindly give me a briefing and it appears we have absolutely no control, no input, no checks whatsoever on, on homeschooling. We have no surety that they actually are being schooled. Both parents could be at work for all we know and could be left at home. So, and she's promised me that we, and I thank Councillor Gorbis for mentioning this at the start, she's, she's agreed with me that we could perhaps have a council-wide briefing on this and certainly I think there's some work with the academies, they don't want to see children left without education and they put a lot of effort into pastoral care. So, and I'm sure there's some suggestions that we can come up with to try and help with when, when children are homeschooled, maybe using modern technology to, to help. I know the particular school, I'm a governor, will take them back for the, for exams and things like that, but that's, that's not the whole thing, of course. So thank you for the work you do, thank you for bringing up the, the home edu, and I'm sure you're pushing at an open door to try and help resolve this, particularly with the local educational authority and hopefully we can, we can do something.
Yeah, it's something I'll take back, I know we're very alive to it in the county, it's a real issue for us, isn't it? So, yeah, I would agree, you know, I think we're all, we would all agree, it's a real challenge for us and then it's about what do we do about it?
Thank you. Councillor Roy?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for your report, Superintendent, and thank you in particular for giving us some real insight into the problems of particularly unregulated placements that looked after children can cause and the, the real resource-intensive nature of that and the complexities about keeping children safe. I am disappointed that when you've moved over to the partnership from the Children's Safeguarding Board, that the, the very successful FGM subgroup that used to work under the Children's Safeguarding Board doesn't appear to be within your work plan, particularly as FGM, Northampton is an FGM hotspot within the country. I'm also concerned particularly, although you talk about gangs, you talk about the links with exclusions and we've recognised that we, this is rapidly increasing, that there's also links in terms of the handling of hate, exclusions and gangs and something like, something in the issue of hate and hate within the community is something this council passed a motion on last year. And in a question to council some months ago, I was advised that actually this would be an increasing part of safeguarding work with children, but doesn't appear to be there, particularly in respect of Community Initiative for Reducing Crime, which has no part of its website that deals with hate crime or handling hate crime or support, support hate crime. And I also want to thank you for being so frank about the effects that limited resources have had on your ability, on your ability and other agencies' ability to kind of grab hold of this agenda and make effective change. And although you've said that this is a government change in terms of establishing the partnership, I wondered whether your, what your perspective was on increasing cuts in the voluntary sector in terms of addressing this agenda as well, particularly with today's announcements in the local press around 1.6 million being cut from organisations working particularly in Wellingborough like Glamis Hall and Whacker.
Okay, so I guess there's a number of issues there, so specifically then on to the, the FGM female genital mutilation, the stats that suggest that we are a hotspot area, I have to say, are debatable. I used to chair the subgroup, I used to chair the honour-based abuse group, as I said, because in different roles I've been a detective inspector and a detective chief inspector, so at different levels. And so that's linked to the wider honour-based abuse and we know forced marriage and things like that. So the stats are really questionable, if I'm honest. We know that a few years ago the NHS had to start collecting FGM data, but the numbers are very, very low and we probably get, if we get one or two per month, that would be it, certainly no more than that. But it is an important area. There is a, there is a group that's chaired by the detective inspector that reports to me, that does look at the FGM, but I said, we get, we get low numbers and again, it's not something that we can really do, it's trying to get, I guess, the trust and confidence of some of the communities to come and tell us about it because we know it's very prevalent, don't we, in certain areas of the world? So, but we honestly do try and do that. So we know that a key, key period, for example, is the summer holidays where young females, young girls may be taken out for a number of weeks and the alarm bells start going. And I promise you, we've actually stopped a plane before because we've flagged somebody and we got them stopped at the airport, we ring up the passports and they hold the plane to get this kid off because we were worried about a child going out to Africa to have FGM, to be subjected to FGM. So, you know, we do take it seriously, if that makes sense, but it's a challenge. In terms of the gang work, so we've got the, it's called SURF, but the Community Initiative to Reduce Violence, I think is one of our really positives that we're doing at the moment, clearly we need to do more. It started in the north-east area of Northampton. Why did we pick that? Some of the reasons we've alluded to about the poverty on the eastern side of, of Northampton, but we're picking up, we've had three hundred referrals just in the last six months, all young people that we are worried about being exploited by gangs. And that, and the actual, the gang work was, it was, had been a great accolade, it was come from Glasgow and of course in Glasgow they had a real problem of, of gangs and fights and violence, so it was taken the best of their, making it fit into Northamptonshire and it's, it's a really, really good model and we're trying to turn young people, avoid them getting, you know, get them out of the gangs, get them out of, out of trouble and clearly we don't want them to avoid, to go to prison, we want them to turn their lives around and I think that's a really, really positive thing. And they're featuring at next, next week's conference, they're talking around some of the work they've done and I think it's excellent and working with the youth, youth vending services, really, really good. But clearly we can't, you know, we'd like to get more, I still think it's a little bit of a postcode lottery and actually the meeting I've just been at was just at our fourth strategic board and we talked around in there, some of our stats would say, we know we've got far more of a gang problem in the town, but they would say we have less county lines, for example, around South Northamptonshire and East Northampton, well is that because we don't know about it? Because we assume, don't we, it goes on, it's more prevalent in the cities. So it is a real issue for us and I think there's a big shift in policing, particularly around looking at the exploitation agenda, but it's a real challenge for us. And I think you mentioned hate crime, unfortunately we have seen a rise in hate crime, I would say again, coming back, I don't want to be political, but we know there's some real challenges, don't we, and the country seems really divided at the moment around a number of key areas and, and I think it's a real shame really, but our hate crime has gone up and we have done things like working with the mosques and things like that and our neighbourhood officers are very live to that, but it's a real challenge for us.
Thank you very much. Councillor Irvine Swett?
Thank you. In, in February you launched your campaign against crime with knife and I was there when you did and it, after that I went to visit an academy and when we say that the academy do not or expel and so on, it was in a deprived area. And what the mistress said, that her main problem is that she doesn't have a problem of big car coming from parents with their children in front of the doors because her parents are too poor and they walk, but she has gang two, three, four street beyond the school. And she said, the problem we have is when the gang arrive and said first time, oh, if you do that for me, I will give you the mobile phone free and after that, if you do that for me, I give you a thousand pounds and suddenly they are hooked. And she said, I cannot make them dreaming the dream that they can become, have a good life because the gang make them having a super life of the super rich with the youth. So how can, with the school and the police made a strong message that the gang, to join the gang, when you are caught is in jail. I know the police has launched a national about knife crime and I've interviewed a young boy who was fifteen and is still in jail. So how we can make children, because if their parents cannot control them and say to them- So how we can make children, because if their parents cannot control them and say to them, crime is not the option, because the parents are not there to impose, how can the police and the school say, if you choose crime, your future is very bleak? How, have you started that, or what do you think about it?
I mean, I think the prevention agenda, as I've already touched upon, is really, really important. If you think about the first principles of Peel, Sir Robert Peel, who created the police force, the Metropolitan Police, is all about prevention. And I think the key aspect that we have lost in the last few years, because we've reduced the number of officers, and so we deal with, we go back so busy answering 999 calls and dealing with all these crimes. And the one thing I think there's been a real shame, and we've dropped off, is that prevention, and that's the challenge, because some stuff, we can't not answer 999 calls. So prevention's really, really important, and we do try and do it. And it comes down to the whole exploitation. I think it's worth making the point that any young person can be a victim of exploitation. And I've dealt with cases where, from very affluent backgrounds, and they've still been exploited, because in their own bedrooms, because they're online, and they, you know, it's that thrill, that excitement of going to meet somebody. And I know I've talked previously, we've caught, you know, a guy in his 40s that was abusing, you know, arranging to meet a 14-year-old girl, giving her cocaine and things like that. Thankfully, he's in prison, but we get that, so it goes across the board. But it is also, it's a very valid point, that our, the most vulnerable in society are often the ones that are subject to poverty, are the ones that are more likely to be drawn into gangs. It's tragic, isn't it? And so we need to try and work and try and target those schools, and we do a lot of stuff. We've got people that go around, as I said, coming back to the SURF team that I talked around, they go into some of our schools. And if we can link in with them and try and get this message out, we try and do it. We've got former gang members, and again, one's talking at the conference next week, that will talk around how they turn their life around. So we're trying to get it in. And clearly, the most important thing is, our job often for the police is to prosecute, but if we can prevent and get in there early, then it's really, really important for us. And that's always what we would try and do if we can.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you. Our Assistant Director of Children's Services, Sharon Maldune, would like to comment on the report as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do you want to come round?
I just wanted to clarify and build on a couple of points that Richard has made. So with regard to electively home-educated children, it is true, we have many more children now in that category than we've had before. In fact, we were looking at the data just yesterday, it's 950. Quite right, councillor Lawman, in terms of the powers that we have statutorily to go into those homes when the parents have decided to do that. But of course, we don't stop there. What we also do is look at of that known community, who are also known to other services. So we will identify those young people who are, or have been previously known on a child in need or child protection plan. If we then have concerns around that, obviously, then we can speak with schools, understand the background, and then we will look at what actions we need to take to assure ourselves that that young person is appropriately safeguarded. The annual report talks to the fact that there are a number of reports that have been requested by the partnership to understand the dynamic of that, because there are young people who are electively home-educated that do very well and thrive from that. So we are working on it. They're not a cohort that are unknown to us, and we will absolutely be driving that forward through the serious case review recommendations. With regards to education and statutory partnership, we are there from an education point of view, because SALLY as the DCS has responsibility both for social care and education. In my role, we are looking at exclusion data, both fixed and permanent, and work, and indeed those schools who have a higher propensity to, where an outcome is for children to be electively home-educated. So I know who those schools are, and we are in contact with the regional schools commissioner and Ofsted, and we have discussed that, to talk about what we need to do as a partner to understand what's going on in that school community. So what I wanted to do was really reassure you that education isn't a safeguard in partnership, it's there through SALLY, and that we, operationally, my teams, look at those vulnerable cohorts through the education inclusion team, to make sure we do the very best we can for those young people.
Thank you very much. Thank you for those comments. Thank you. I've got one last councillor. Councillor Gonzalez-Deservig.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity. A point here, I think, to superintendent, and I think also to our assistant director, that safeguarding cleaves everyone's responsibility. It doesn't fall on just the police or authorities or anywhere else at all, or health. But we all have to be aware that, in the day, we are all adults talking to children, in reality, and trying to engage with them, whether we're parents or whether we have a responsibility in society in one respect or another. It's absolutely crucial to keep that conversation going. In the report here, quite clearly states on page five, the voice of children and young people. We can't go out there, as we all know, and just take a bit of a vox pop. We have to keep that trust and confidence going with them. And I'd love to see a youth forum started, that you can go back to, you can bounce ideas off, and you can get some sort of regular input and effectively not cajole them into giving you more information that they don't necessarily have, or create fears in them that aren't there. But certainly have that regular ongoing conversation, because at the end of the day, we're all over the age of 18 in this room, and I'm sure everyone that goes out from your teams is also over the age of 18. Now, whether they well and truly engage perfectly is one of those questions that we can only see on the day. And I've been to SURF presentations and realised how impressive they are with gang members or former gang members being part of it. It's absolutely crucial that to have a successful society, where we safeguard not just children, but the future members of our society, who will be out there, leading, controlling, deciding about where we all are in our old age and beyond, at the end of the day, a safer community, they need to have an ongoing conversation. So I'd really implore to absolutely get together a youth forum and have that regular interaction. Let's not just do it as adults, let's just make sure it comes from them too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could I ask councillor Goldby to reply?
Well, I think the first thing to do is to thank Richard for coming and speaking to us today with his, in his open, frank and candid style. You've highlighted clearly what your challenges are, what the pressures are. I think they're shared across the whole of the system. And the key to what we, your message, I think, is that partnership and that collective will to address the issues together. I'm not going to go into all the detail of everything that's been spoken about, because I think there's been some very relevant points raised. But to thank members for their points and reaffirm our commitment to that partnership, we know that things have got to get better. And hopefully, working with you, we can, we can try and achieve that. But just to thank Richard again, and I recommend the report, Chair. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, yes. Does councillor accept the advice in the report? Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you again for DS Thompson. Thank you. Item nine, new capital scheme approvals.
Could I just declare, I'm prejudicial on this, and duck out. My company does engage in discussions with people on VM, where we are a reseller. And whilst I'm not aware that we're actively engaged with the council on this, in the interest of transparency, I'll duck out at this point.
Thank you for that, and we'll note that. Can I ask councillor Longley to propose a report?
Certainly can, Chair. I'll be very brief. The narrative is in the report, and this is a question of risk reduction. We're all very used to IT systems, and they ran out of date. If anybody actually wants to know what virtualisation software is, I'd be very welcome to arrange that to be explained to you. That's really all I've got to say on this, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Goldby to second the report.
Happy to second the report and reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Mercer.
Thank you, Chair. I don't need anyone to explain to me what VMware is. Thank you. In the report, it refers to the hardware not being compatible with the current version. Can we have some information about whether or not there will need to be any hardware upgrades accompanying the VMware upgrade? And if so, is it within the current budget?
Any other questions? Councillor Stambro.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd like to ask a question, actually, on the governance of the capital programme, specifically the third bullet point at section four dot one, which tells us about the place shaping board and the transformation board chaired by the chief executive. It tells us that that board or those boards review and consider business cases for new capital investment and funding prioritisation, an important function. New capital schemes or extensions to existing schemes are then recommended to cabinet for approval. My question is, presumably, those boards consider schemes or extensions to existing schemes and proposals which are not recommended to cabinet for approval. Is there any councillor involvement in the place shaping board and the transformation board, please?
Thank you. Could I ask councillor Longley to reply?
Certainly can. Yes, I can answer the question from Andy about the, what the hardware associated with this is in the budget. I'll have to check on the detail of that. Very pleased to do so, and very pleased to share that with him. On the, on the place board, the answer is, we don't, we don't run it like that. What happens is the place come along with, on the basis of the budget criterion that we put together back in February, and then come along with recommendations. And my experience has been, they've been extremely helpful and open on this. And I've got a lot of, a lot of confidence when it does come through. You're very welcome, of course, as you know, councillor Stambro, on your, on our Thursday afternoon meetings. If you wish to have further information, it's there for you.
Thank you very much. Does councillor accept the report? Eh? Can I go on, try to me Pension Committee annual report, and councillor Ekins is going to move the report?
Thank you, Chairman. It's really just to have the report noted for council, but what I might do is also add thanks to councillor Lawman, who laid down the foundations of good governance in the pension board, and...
Councillor Tui to second the report.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm quite happy to second that report.
Thank you very much. Councillor Brookfield, you wanted to say something?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and to congratulate councillor Ekins on becoming the Chair of the Pension Committee. I would like to ask the chairman and the council, really, what attempts are being made by, and what efforts are being made by this administration to improve the representation of women on the Pension Committee. At present, there are seven councillor members on that committee, of which only one is a woman, and that is a Labour councillor. There are five Conservative councillors on that committee, and there has never been a female Conservative member of that committee in the time that I've been on this council. That's a bit of a negative, and I will persist with the negative and then come on to a positive. I wrote some time ago to the pension regulator to outline the concern that I have on this, particularly as most of the, or certainly more than half of the members of the LGPS will be women. It's so important. It's so important. It is so important, Mr Chairman, that we have a committee that is representative of the members of the local government pension scheme. I think at the moment, women are particularly ill-served by the pension scheme, particularly the women who fall into the WASP group. And so, you know, at that time, it is, at this time, it is really, really important that we have more women. So that brings me to the positive. When I was a member of that committee, I enjoyed it very much, I got a lot from it. You certainly, in terms of personal development, and you can gain a lot, the training is good. And I would encourage the Conservative members of this council, who are women, to really think about, is this something for me? Not just is this something for me, but this could be something for me. It really is an interesting area of work, and you certainly learn a lot. I don't really want to add to that, except that, just to, just to highlight again, that the, it's not good enough, that only two members of the whole committee, that's councillors and independent members, only two are women.
Councillor Stambro.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And I would also like to congratulate councillor Ekins on becoming chairman of the Pensions Committee, and acknowledge the work of his predecessor councillor Lawman. About the time that the change took place, there was a proposal being put forward by this council that it might have a holiday, I think, in its payments to the pension scheme amounting to £2 million. And that was knocked back at the time. I wonder if the current chairman of the Pensions Committee would be prepared to give us his view as to whether he would be in favour of or against such a proposal, were it ever to be resurrected.
Thank you. Councillor Lawman.
I just wanted to pay my tribute to the staff of the Pension Committee, who, for their support and help and work over the, over the eight years I was chairman. It's a, it's a very technical area with a lot of government intervention and directives, and it's fast-moving, though people won't believe it, in a number of areas, and they cope with it admirably. If there's one part of LGSS that's a success, it's certainly the pensions team. And I think councillor Brookfield ably identified that it's, it can be an interesting area if you, if you put into it. It's also an area that managed to get its accounts unqualified several years in a row, and just shows how good it is. So I just want to recall my appreciation of the staff and the members of the committee over the, over the years, and their thanks. It was very enjoyable being on it. It doesn't, leaving the committee has not stopped all the emails from the industry, though they're still coming in great trice. I still keep in touch.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Councillor Ekins to sum up.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. On the, on the first issue of, shall we say, parity on the Pension Committee, I'll have to put it on record, is that we did approach female members of the Conservative group, of which one of them was very highly, shall we say, qualified to take the position, and she declined. So we, we were aware of the equality, and it's nice to say that, even though that she was asked to come back on, and you couldn't make it, and your other colleague, Angela Roy, has taken your place. So we did maintain the equality, and we will continue to do so if any of our other standing committee members should wish to step down in the future. As for councillor Stambro's remark, I'm pretty sure that councillor Stambro will be very, very aware that if the topic is raised, and it needs to be addressed, and it needs to be looked into again, I'm pretty sure that he knows of my robust scrupula and questioning of all matters will be observed and carried on as per usual. And likewise, if any decision-making process is taken, we will look at all options available to us. But failing that, Mr Chairman, is I would like to recommend that the full council note the content of the report.
Thank you very much. Can I ask that councillor accepts the advice? Thank you very much. Thank you. Miraculously, we have kept to schedule, so I would suggest that we had a break, well-deserved for lunch, and came back at quarter to two, just to give us a bit of leeway. I think that's a fair compromise. I know that some members are keen to do half hour, and some are very keen to do an hour, so I think the obvious compromise is back at quarter to two.